Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of September the 23rd. I see nearly all of us are here. Is Mr. Luna going to be with us telephonically today? Do we know? Remotely?
He's already taken care of him in right now.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Right now, he's a very -- we see his handsome face as we start. There's his handsome forehead. There's his -- oh, hey, David. Welcome. All right, so we-
Hey, Mayor, thank you.
We now have all of our council present. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss utility enterprise fund forecast and provide a recommendation on proposed utility rate adjustments.
Morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Richel. I am the Assistant Director in the Office of Management and Budget. And so, we were -- staff was recommended to bring this presentation and the rate recommendations forward from the Audit and Finance and Enterprise Committee. So today, what I will be doing is I will go over the, kind of, the introduction, and then each individual department will come up and present their section of the presentation and talk a little bit more in the details of the operations. And then what I'll do is, I will then, at the end, wrap it all up and show the forecast and a timeline for the rate process. So today, we'll have Jake West, Water Resources Director, along with Scott Boucher, the Environmental Management and Sustainability Director, and then also Frank McCray, Energy Resources Director. So to give you kind of an overview of the utility operations, each utility is operated as a separate business center, but they're all treated as one fund. So we have the utility fund where they're all treated as one. What this does is helps with the reserve balance. It provides a safety net for unforeseen conditions. So for instance, spikes in commodity costs that we've been seeing with water and electric and gas, but also, it assists in minimizing the impact on the customers. So if one utility has high expenses one year, one utility may not, and so with that balancing act, that reserve balance helps minimize the impact on customers. And then also, the reserve balance can be used to smooth out rate adjustments year to year, as you'll notice in the end when I show the forecast. That reserve balance, it helps if -- to smooth those rate adjustments out to where we can use that fund balance as a drawdown in the outer years. So with that, we have five principles that we like to follow here at the city. One is the balance of net sources and uses. So what we like to do is make sure that our ongoing expenditures match our ongoing revenues. And then also, with a 20% or higher reserve fund balance, what this does is it helps with our credit rating. The credit rating agencies look at that fund balance, and every time we've talked to them, they've liked to see a higher fund balance. So what we try to do is be at about a 20%. And what that does with the credit rating agencies is it helps when we go out to issue debt. It helps with lowering the interest costs. And then also, with the rate adjustments are predictable and smooth throughout the forecast. So what we try to do, instead of having ups and downs of increases and then decreases, things like that, we try to smooth out the rate, the rate adjustments throughout the forecast. And then also, what we do is equity between residential and non-residential residents. What we try to do there is make sure that the one customer class is not subsidizing another customer class. And then also, affordability of the utility services. We want to make sure that the utilities that we provide our customers are affordable. And with those, we've been working with the departments over the past couple of months in going into the details and making -- and taking these into consideration and to the rate adjustments. And what we'll do now is we'll have Water go through their department presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jake West, Water Resources Director. With me today is Eric Hansen, our Management Assistant in Water Resources. He's going to walk us through our program this morning for you.
Great. Thank you, Jake. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Within the Water Resources Department, we'd like to start with talking about the water utility. This slide shows the notable increase in operating expenditures from last fiscal year to this year's budget. Water commodity costs have risen, reflecting the Central Arizona Project's Tier 1 pricing from the shortage declaration on the Colorado River. The major driver of the increase to plant chemicals is the increase to chlorine costs. The increase in treatment plant power costs is driven by consumption or more power used. And annual performance increases have been built into personnel. In addition, the department has received two new treatment plant operator positions. Moving on to existing debt. Budget for this fiscal year is an increase of $8.4 million in debt serviced over the previous fiscal year. Now, this is a result of a couple factors. New debt issued due to several large capital projects over the last several years, including Signal Butte and several large waterline projects. In addition, there's been a greater amount of savings from refundings realized in fiscal year 2021 as compared to fiscal year 2122.
Eric, quick question. Just make some-
Point that the first two are causing the increase, and the refundings suggest that in the prior years, we had a much lower debt service because we had some refunding opportunities. So that, those dollars were smaller. We don't, we haven't, that it's not incalculated in this current year's going forward. Refunding opportunities only happen, can only refund so many times. And so, it's just, it is increasing, but part of that is too, we were able to reduce our debt service quite a bit in the prior years. And so, this increase, part of it is that comparison of something that we were able to realize tremendous amount of savings in the prior year, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Chris. So if we could touch again on the increase in water commodity costs. The black line on this chart shows the city's annual actual costs in water purchase from the Salt River Project and CAP, with the red dash line being that of forecast purchases. This chart visualizes that price jump in fiscal year 2122, driven in large part by CAP's Tier 1 shortage pricing. With further increases planned for fiscal year 2223, increasing water commodity costs to the city by almost 50%.
Excuse me, quick question. So that graph takes CAP and SRP and combines them together?
All sources, right?
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, sir. Moving on to the next slide. The top chart on this slide breaks out last year's fiscal, last fiscal year's water commodity purchases from SRP and CAP. The city purchased close to 50,000 acre feet of CAP water at a cost of $8.7 million and almost 33,000 acre feet of SRP water at $1.4 million. The next chart down shows by calendar year this time, the acre foot equivalent of rates of SRP and CAP water, both actuals and forecasts for 2022 and beyond. Now, another pressure the department faces is adequately addressing growth within our city. There are four future capital projects built into this rate recommendation, which we'd like to highlight. The first is the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, which would allow the city to further its partnership with the Gila River Indian Community. In addition to treating, in addition, or in exchange for treated effluent, the city would receive CAP water from the GIC at a reduced rate. At a cost of $72 million, this project would provide for economic growth within the city, greater water system reliability, and mitigation against drought conditions. Now, these are those same two charts from three and two slides ago. However, this time, they include completion of the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. The top chart shows the commodity costs being pulled down as that blue dash line, realizing water commodity savings of close to $1 million by fiscal year 2728 alone, and a return in as little as 11 to 12 years. The bottom right, or the bottom chart shows the acre foot cost forecast of that water access in exchange with the GIC.
And that's pretty significant. You can tell that's the same water, but at a significantly reduced cost to the city. This 2024, the CAP water will be $284, right?
Yes, sir.
And then, with this, water we purchase from the GIC, I guess, I don't, we don't purchase from them-
Energy.
Oh, the energy, okay.
Mr. Freeman has a question, I know.
Well, Chris, on that topic, I mean, you're buying 50, I'm using round numbers, 50,000 acre feet of water from CAP, and then when you move over, you're, you're going to save about $200 an acre foot-
Right.
-- once you get the central reuse line in. So that's a million bucks, right there.
Right, there you go.
Well, help me understand that, because if the project itself, the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline project, is like a, what, a 60, 70 million dollar project?
72.
72 million. 72 million. And so, if we're saving a million dollars a year, how does that not take 72 million, or how does that not take 72 years to, for a turn?
So that, that return will get greater and greater over time as the cost of the CAP water continues to get higher and higher and higher.
Okay. So-
Almost in a few years, it's going to be $300 an acre foot for CAP water versus 200.
So we will save more than a million dollars.
Yeah, that's the initial.
Yeah, that's, yes, sir.
The chart, this is definitely an investment off this chart, I guess, is what you're saying.
I get, I, we've heard, we've talked about this so many times. I know that it pays for itself quickly, but I was just trying to figure out, how, how does it pay for itself quickly if we're only saving a million dollars a year? And so, that, that's incorrect. We're saving multiple millions of dollars.
Yeah, we just say, yeah, future savings. And the other part is, it provides another water resource to the city. And that CAP water that we get, it's an additional, I guess we'd say, additional source of water we don't currently have access to. And it's cheaper, and probably just as important, it's the, I don't know, high priority, tier 1, whatever the description is.
High priority water at a lower cost.
Yeah, so meaning, we get the designation that the native Americans, the Hylas, get as far as its priority. So that, that establishes more certainty of water resource to the city also.
So did I hear you say that the return is about an 11-year period?
11 to 12 years.
Okay, great. I know, Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Yes, on the water rate of around $61 an acre foot for the reuse pipeline. I assume you amortize the cost, the capital cost in with the rates? Is that how we pay for the capital costs?
This is, this, we are only paying for electricity or the, the cost to move that water. We are not, yeah.
But, in the forecast, yes, remember, this is just showing you the cost of water.
Okay.
But, in the forecast that you'll see Brian show going out into the future, he makes the assumption of the cost of the principal and interests to, to build out that pipeline. That is built into the forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. The next project we would like to highlight is East Mesa Water Interconnect. This project would allow the city to move between 5 to 10 million gallons between its three water treatment plants. At a cost of $82 million, this project would provide for greater system reliability through diversification and operational resiliency through capacity sharing. There's also the added value of being able to move some of our cheaper water, typically distributed on project, off project.
So Eric, again, that's moving, going back to the previous slide, is moving more of our Salt River Project water over to the area where we're seeing the highest growth.
NCS water, yes.
So we can help reduce the demand on the CAP water by moving Salt River water over. But right now, those systems are not connected. And so, you can see the advantage of moving that much cheaper water over into the area where we're seeing the growth and the demand on water. And so, that's what this, this infrastructure, this pipe would do.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So with that said, is that off-project water or on-project water that you're moving to the interconnect?
This would be like NCS water, so water-
Conservation water that we talked about.
Yes, water that is allowed to be moved off-project.
Okay, so there is a distinction between on and off-project and NCS water and et cetera.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, sir.
I know we went through it on the Audit and Finance with you, but thanks.
The third project we'd like to highlight is expansion of the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. This project would double plant capacity from 24 million gallons a day to 48 million gallons a day, allowing the city to maximize its exchange with the GIC. At a cost of $98 million, this project supports residential and commercial development and will work to help Southeast Mesa realize its full potential.
Now, Eric, even, or Jake, even without the GIC project, that pipeline, the demand to expand the capacity to treat water would still be needed, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Yeah, so it's not, I don't think it's only, you know, it's okay, it was 72 plus 98 to get that water. It's just that we need to have a place to treat that water that we're going to bring down to the GICs. But also, what's driving this is regardless of that, we still have to expand the treatment plant, which is great that we have the land, that we already have most of the major infrastructure in place. I think the last expansion was, how much was that one? Does anybody remember? It was, it was a lot more, because we were bringing that pipe from the canal and-
Yes, we had three miles of a pipeline, 50, 50-inch pipeline to come to the plant for the initial plant.
So this is just an incremental increase. The other, we sunk a lot of costs in the previous expansion or development, and this is now just taking and creating more capacity on the same site.
So, once the expansion at the Signal Butte happens, are we then totally built out as far as water treatment capacity? Or is there, you know, 20 years from now, well, the Mesa City Council will be building a new water treatment plant somewhere?
At this site, Jake?
At this site right now, once we go through this next expansion, that's all we've got room for at Signal Butte at this time.
Yeah, so to answer your question, at this site, this would be the last expansion at this site.
But are we then treating all the water we possibly can?
We're kind of at the belief, I think, that we're, with all our other facilities, we'll be able to meet most of our future demand, anticipated demand, is that correct?
That is correct. Because what, the interconnect pipe allows us to use Brown Road as well. When we brought Signal Butte on-
The Brown, there's our treatment plant at Brown Road.
24 MGD from Brown Road. And so, we have capacity at Brown Road that's unused. So with the interconnect, we can treat additional water, and between the two plants, we can meet the needs in Southeast Mesa.
So Bob, you have additional, how much capacity at Brown Road?
Brown Road, 72 MGD, and we're running right around 50 MGD right now.
So another 20 plus another 24 here.
Yes.
So, in our forecast modeling, we anticipate that we expect this should be sufficient for what we call ultimate build-out for the city. Now, if that's not the case, then it would be a, you know, 10 years from now, or whenever that might happen, it would be a significant increase because the city would have to go find a new site for a whole new-
Right.
-plant location. And we haven't, you know, Signal Butte, we bought that property probably before Mr. Luster, I don't know. Sometimes, it was a long time ago. So, we anticipate this is sufficient.
I guess that's, that's the question I'm wondering, will, will 10 years from now, people say that dang Chris Brady, you know, forgot to-
Oh, they're going to say that.
Yeah. Are we okay at ultimate build-out with this capacity?
I think that the way these gentlemen do their forecasting, Mayor, and they're doing it out for the next 40 years, that there would be time, right? If, if they see that they're going to run out, we would have to go find the infrastructure and, or find the land and the infrastructure to do it. But again, at the same time, right now, we don't, we know what the water resource, resources are that are, that are available to treat, if that makes sense, right? We know what the water portfolio is now and in the future, and what that total amount is, and this is sufficient for that. So not only would, if we were going to build another plant, that also means we've not discovered, but we've acquired additional water resource that we don't know of today.
So the problem wouldn't be the lack of a treatment plant, the water, problem would be the lack of water to treat?
Yeah, or, yes. I mean, so if the issue is we all of a sudden come upon millions of gallons of more water that are become available to the city, then yes, we would want to build out the plant. But we, every model we have right now that takes us through ultimate build-out suggests that this is sufficient for our needs.
Thank you.
So the final project we'd like to highlight is smart metering. At a cost of $60 million to the, to the department, this project would provide revenue security through greater protection against theft, loss, or breaks. In addition, this project would provide for real-time data on system demand, not only to the city, but to the customer as well. Moving on to proposed changes to water rates and their impact to the city's typical customer, the recommendation is for a 3% increase to residential service and usage charges for an increase of about $1.16 a month to our typical residential customer's water bill. On the non-residential side, the recommendation is again for a 3% increase to the service charge and a 5% and 6% increase respectively to the general and landscape uses charges. This equates to an effective increase of 3.8% or about $2.04 a month to the city's typical general commercial customer, and 5.3% or about $8.73 a month to the city's typical commercial landscape customer. Moving along to wastewater.
Yes, I'm sorry, can you go back to that slide? Because I think, and I know the Vice Mayor has questions, but you told us what the impact would be to a non-residential customer, to a landscaped customer. Did you mention, I think you did, but it just went past me, the residential customer?
Yeah, residential customer, the impact that our typical residential customer would be $1.16 a month.
Okay, and what's the percent of the rate increase?
3% to both the usage and service charges.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
So, as we discussed in the Audit and Finance meeting, I just want to kind of review again about our commercial users, the mega-users that, and I know we only have a couple, but I think there's a few more coming online. And like over, I know some of the data centers will be using over a million gallons a day. So the rate we charge them, there is, actually, the higher use, the lower the rate, up to a 40% discount for their use. And I'm looking at the commercial landscape, which I assume is more of a golf course, some kind of use like that?
Our commercial, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, the commercial landscape is for our commercial customers who have landscaping in front of their, in front of their business or around their business.
HOAs.
HOAs, yes, yes, sir.
It's separately metered.
Oh, okay.
Separately metered, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I just find a disparity there between the highest use being for some landscaping and HOA, for example, and our mega-users who get the 40% discount when they're using extreme amounts of water. I think we can recover some of our capital costs, which are due to this mass expansion and these high mega-water users and having to get into these, I'm having over $300 million of capital costs. Well, just in the expansion is $250 million. I want to suggest that we look at the mega-water users and put more pressure on their, their extreme use because of the increasing costs of water, our infrastructure cost, the pressures that we feel as a community in these very high users, you know, what our capacities will be looking out. Right now, it seems like we're fine, but we can see the water, the drought contingency plan, and I know I've spoken a lot about this, a lot of things impacting the cost of water, the infrastructure of water. I think we have to apply more pressure on the mega-water users to conserve as much as possible and not make it 40% cheaper for them when they get to those high rates. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I think one thing to remember is that the mega-water users, a lot of times, are bringing water credits. We're not providing their full allocation of water. They're bringing water credits, and at the end of the day, especially like Facebook, for example, we end up having a net positive in water because they're getting the water credits through SRP. Yes, we're transporting it, but it's not counting against our 100-year supply. And after they use it, utilize the water for cooling after three or four times, they flush that, it goes to our water treatment plant, goes back into the aquifer, or it goes to GIC, and we recover the water credits for that as well. So it ends up being a net positive in the long term for the city of Mesa and the, and customers of Mesa.
I don't mean to get in a debate with you, and I do highly respect your opinion, and I know you know a lot about this, and my opinion's a little bit different, but I am concerned about the capital costs that are going into providing this water, and that is, and then, of course, that are buying water on the market. But overall, our capacity as a valley is in danger. So, yes, maybe we're in a good position, but the region, I can't say that. Thank you.
Question.
Yes, Frankie.
On the residential, you said average user will go $1.16, but I know we have a tier system. Is that, is it, within the tiers, are we seeing folks getting increases more than others? Like different tiers getting more, an increase than others within the tiers? Does that make sense?
So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Councilmember Hedy, we are, we have, we have completed our tier adjustments, so the tiers are no longer moving. Our typical residential customer uses about 6,000 gallons or 6K gals a month, and that's how we calculate that, that, that usage or that, that impact to our typical user.
And then, Eric, will every other tier adjust by 3%?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so, does that help, Frankie? So the idea is, in the years past, we've been making rate adjustments to separate these tiers based on their usage. And I think what we're saying is we've kind of gotten that separation where we feel like you've got kind of your basic user, and then maybe a bigger home, and then a super-user.
Sure.
We've made those distinctions, so there are those different rates are already established. We feel like that separation and distinction is, we're in a good spot. So now, what happens is when we come to you with the rate, it's just increasing everybody by 3%. Now, 3% for a top tier is going to be much more because their assumption of this rate, or the variable rate is much higher. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just, my, my point was more if, you know, folks that use less water, that, you know, they're being impacted more than, you know, a home that has, is using a lot more water. Is that an equal kind of share based on, of course, the folks at the top will pay-
They're going to pay-
More as far as the cost, but as far as equal share, I think that's important for, for all the tiers.
Well, the higher tiers are paying a greater proportion of-
Of the cost.
Of the cost, yes.
Okay.
That's why we created that separation, so that those, those fees are higher. And frankly, part of it was recognizing they're putting a bigger demand on the system and to kind of build in kind of a conservation incentive, right? That if you're on the edge of that tier, if you save, you know, whatever, some gallons there, you might be able to slip into the next tier below. And for the, in, in using less water, also, that applied rate is, is smaller too.
Okay. And then, question on the commercial landscape. Is that an additional charge that they get metered on? They get a commercial, if they, if they're commercial base, and then if they have landscape, it's another metered cost that they get charged on?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Councilmember Hedy, yes, sir. They have a separate landscape meter that they pay for the meter, the service, and then the usage charge for it as well.
Okay.
And so, there's a, we're charging more on that landscape, but also, that meter, though, doesn't calculate into the wastewater calculation. Does that make sense? So they avoid that, that cost versus if the meter to the building, for their water meter to the building, will also now get billed for wastewater. So.
Okay, so I just wanted to blend something in. I'm glad we're moving, moving towards a smart metering, because if I'm a residential customer and I'm looking at my tier group, so I want to keep my gallons per minute less, so I'm not affected so much by the rate increase, which is 3%, which I think is reasonable. And so, my, one of my questions is, is have you, did you adjust the tiers from 6, 10, 15, 25? Were the tiers adjusted? Did we do that recently or last year?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, sir. We, that was completed last year. The tier adjustments were completed last year, and they're now set at 7K gals, 15K gals, 24K gals, and beyond.
I got 6, 10, 15, 25.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I guess- So, I guess, one of my questions has kind of been answered here. There's a 6% increase for landscape, large, commercial, industrial, excess surcharge usage as well. So, I think we're trying to raise up our rates for the larger users and compensate just slightly for our residential users. Those, you know, us as residential users are impacted mostly by rate increases, and we want to keep it minimal. So, just looking at that, I think the smart metering is good because then I can monitor as a residential to make sure I don't go over the, get in different tiers to be charged more. So can we ramp up the smart metering, Chris?
Yes, they, we, I think we're shooting for October.
October 4th.
Bringing the contract for the meters themselves.
The contractor.
Yeah, we're, we're in some intense conversations right now with the contract. We have a contractor selected, so we're just getting to the final details of the agreement, trying to get a good deal, because this is, this is a contract that goes out for how long, tenure, how long? Yeah, so it's a long-term agreement for a lot of money, so we're, city attorney's office is helping us make sure we get it in a good position before we bring it to the city, so, bring it to the council. But it's, drafts are out there, there's a lot of work going on, we'll get those to you here pretty soon.
Well, and the other part of it is wastewater. If you're smart metering, you can reduce your costs on your wastewater side, not on your input, but then your output side, right? So, I mean, it's kind of a two-way sword there. So, thank you.
On the smart meters, Chris, so you said contract October, but what, when is the actual, when the first phases start and people can start using smart meters?
So I think the rollout will take, how long?
A year.
A year?
So we're talking about October of next year, December?
Well, you know, the council approves it, let's say it starts beginning of the year, because you got to go, the contract has to ramp up, you have to order all the meters, so I don't know what, Mark, what's the?
Mayor, Council. The first phase will, once we get contracts approved, we hope to start receiving meters by the end of the year, beginning of, of the calendar year, and then they'll start going in. The first piece that needs to go in, though, is the software and the training of staff and connecting all of that first. So it's kind of a simultaneous, so we hope to have the phase ones starting to go into the ground and then starting to be connected to the system over the first half of next year and then starting to implement over the summer.
So remember, it's not just installing new meters, but it's also linking them up to.
To the software system.
And the wireless, so that there's real-time feedback to the customer as well as to the city, so.
And I assume there's going to be a large, based on the update, for folks to use the smart metering program, larger outreach component or media component as far as letting them know how to use it, the benefits and all these things, right?
We can do that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, when we have that item, that contract for you to approve, we'll, why don't we plan on just kind of giving you a broad presentation, not only of that, but the implementation and how we're going to roll that out. Vice Mayor.
I hate to beat this to death, but I will. So, just looking over Mark's shoulder at the residential rates, it looks like the more you use, the higher we pay from the first tier to the second tier. It looks like over a 40% increase, so the more a residential user uses, they pay up to 40%, and then it goes up from there more than the first tier. And then on our commercial users, the more you use, you get a 40% discount, and I'm still uncomfortable with that. And it also just came to mind that we have, I think, three mega-users, not three or four mega-users, and only Facebook is the one who's bringing water credits to the table, the others are not. So that does have an impact on our supply and supply costs. And also on the capital, the capital costs, $250 million, and then we have the smart metering around $60 million. Is this over five years or what is our timeline as far as the investment?
To pay it back?
To exercise the dollars, and then I assume within that timeframe, we're accumulating the debt.
Okay.
Okay, so this is like a five-year plan or a three-year?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember, just to make clear, are you asking how long it would take to implement this or how long it takes to pay it off?
No, implement it.
Oh, yeah. So, we just said the meters will take a little over a year, the plants are probably three years.
So the, yes, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but the first year is really of the smart metering is coming up this first year, which is the implementation of the software work, but then also the, the other individual sites that will be testing, doing that, and then after that is all tested and, and the meters are in place, then the next three years will be the full implementation throughout the city. And so it'll take up to four years for the whole AMI smart metering to be put into place. The other projects, we do have scheduled in the forecast, and when I get there, I can kind of let you know where those are at, but we do have those scheduled in the forecast also of when the, the debt would come on and we would start paying for the debt once the projects were done.
Okay, thank you.
You've said this, but if you don't mind, let me just say, but the, the smart metering project, $62 million, will be over four years, and it's not just water meters, it's, it's gas meters, wastewater meters, I mean, we're talking literally hundreds of thousands of meters by the time all of our utilities are considered over. How many accounts do we have?
Mayor, you're correct. First of all, it's a $76 million contract, the $60 million is water's portion of that.
Okay.
The, but the city, we have more than 200,000 meters between gas, electric, and water that all need to be replaced. So that's a, plus new growth that's happening as well, so those need to go in as well. So this is, smart metering is a piece of it, but this is also the meter replacement program and replacing those contracts that are currently existing. So, as, if we have an error or an issue with a meter, in year one of us doing that, we'll go out there and just put the nodes and everything in and get it ready right away as opposed to putting an antiquated one on. All of the meters that we have been purchasing, though, to that point, are equipped and ready to go. We just need to go out and connect, make the connections and put the nodes on for those meters.
I think this is, this is going to be a great story to tell because it fits very nicely with our, our climate action plan as well, so it's going to, kudos for, for bringing this to us, but it is, like you say, it's going to come at a high price and it's going to be a major project by the time you. Yeah, it is, it is expensive because we're giving you the full amount of replacing all the meters in the whole city, but we replace meters every day, so yes, this is more expensive because they're smart meters, but it's, it's not, there is a net cost, I mean, there's a cost we would have incurred regardless, right, to replace meters throughout the entire city, so, but you're right, Mayor, we still have to pay for it, we have to come up with, pay for it, and it's going to impact, you know, our bottom line as far as an expense that we'll be paying for, for the next five, seven, eight years, so. Please proceed.
Great. Moving on to the wastewater utility.
So, can we go back to the previous slide? I'm sorry. Or to the next one, there you go. So the $1.16, so how much of that is tagged on to the service charge to have a meter? And how much is tagged on to the per K-gal usage?
So, the, it's 3% increase to both the service and usage charge. I could take a look real quick at.
What's your service charge right now?
Service charge.
The service charge is a flat fee, so.
Say 20, 29, look it up real quick here.
I was trying to figure out, like, at a $1.16 increase, how much of that's hitting the, the K-gal?
Yes, sir.
Because that's the part that's going to really impact the consumer at the end of the day.
Sir. So, your typical residential consumer is going to have a 3/4 inch meter at about, currently at $28.52 for that, that meter, which includes 3,000 gallons of water. With this proposal, it would go to $29.38, so that's an increase of about 86 cents, so the rest of it being applied to the usage portion of it, so being another, is that another 30 cents is from the usage charge? So it's an increase of 30 cents on the usage portion for your typical.
Or anything over 3,000 gallons.
Yes, sir. All right. Yep, moving along to the wastewater utility. With this slide, we're looking at the notable increases in operating expenditures from last fiscal year to this year's budget. The department is seeing an increased cost in its plant chemicals, specifically polymer, which is a coagulant. And again, the increase in treatment plant power cost is driven by consumption, and the greenfield water reclamation plant is using substantial completion of Phase 3 of its expansion to rehab a centrifuge and centrifuge gearbox. This is going to be a one-time cost to the department. And similar to the water side, annual performance increases have been built into personnel. In addition, there are two new reclamation plant operator positions with the department. Finally, moving on to proposed changes to wastewater rates and their impact to the city's typical customer. The recommendation is for a 3.5% increase to the residential service and usage charges for an increase of about 82 cents a month to the city's typical residential customer's wastewater bill. On the non-residential side, the recommendation is for a 4% increase to the service and usage charges for an increase of about $1.83 a month to the city's typical commercial wastewater bill.
For these gentlemen, that's, we're about ready to switch out teams, so if you have any questions for water, wastewater, otherwise we'll move to solid waste. Okay?
Thank you.
Of course. On service charges, do we look at what other cities or water providers are charging and to see? The only reason I'm asking is for our low-income residents, the service charge goes up, and I want to make sure that we're in line with a competitive rate, and their usage is lower, but maybe they could control their costs more if there was more of an increase in usage rather than the flat service charge? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's a great, it's a conversation we, we have because part of the service charge really tries to capture those fixed costs that we, regardless of whether, how much you use, just the fact that to service, to turn on the water and provide any amount of water to that account, that's what this cost would be. And it's also driven by, frankly, the large population we have that is here seasonally, and it's a way of trying to make sure they're paying their fair share also. So we try to, I understand your point, we try to balance that out, though, and, and between what we call the service charge, the fixed charge, flat charge, versus the variable charge where people can control. But there is a lot of effort, or a lot of, sorry, capital cost just to literally build out the infrastructure and get that, you know, 3/4 inch right to the house, and that's where that number comes from, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
So Mayor and Council, next we'll have Scott Boucher and the Environmental Management Sustainability Director come up and talk about the solid waste recommended rates.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Scott Boucher, Environmental Management Sustainability Director. I'm also joined today by Sherri Collins, who is our Senior Fiscal Analyst, somebody who I rely upon heavily for looking at our financials. And so today, Sherri's going to do the presentation on the rate recommendations, and then I have at the end of this presentation, an update on a couple of projects that the department is working on.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. As Scott mentioned, I'm here to present the rate recommendations for solid waste. The first thing that I'm going to cover today are the increasing cost pressures that we're seeing on our utilities. The first of those being our disposal fees, which is going up by the CPI index. The second of those being our personal services, which includes added positions and step pay increases to account for some of the growth in the city. We're also seeing an increase in cost for our compressed natural gas, and that is our commodity cost is increasing as well as our usage. And lastly, we're seeing an increase in the cost to purchase our barrels and our bins. Our barrels are mostly made of resin, that CPI index is going up as well, and then our bins being made of metal, that index is going up as well. So the first recommendation I'd like to cover with you today is our residential rate recommendation. We're recommending a 2% rate increase, and on the chart, I've included that that is approximately 58 cents per resident per month. In addition to that, on the residential bill, there is a fee for the green and clean fee, and what this fee is, is it covers our household hazardous waste facility as well as our neighborhood cleanup program. We're recommending 5 cents on that program, and that 5 cents is specifically for our neighborhood cleanup program. And so that last line on there, you can see the total increase on that bill would be 63 cents per month. And on the bottom there, I've included a comparison to other cities, so you can see that we're still within the range of the cities around us. The next rate recommendation I'd like to discuss is our pay-as-you-throw programs. So the first one for that is our appliance collection program. We're recommending to increase the charge that we charge our residents for not having their appliances out on their scheduled date. We'd also like to increase, we'd also recommend to increase our bulk item program, our per-load cost by $3. And then lastly, we're recommending to increase our green waste barrel program by 2%. The next area I'd like to cover is our commercial programs. I would like to just remind you that these programs are competitive, so we compete with the private industry, and they, basically, the privates can choose what waste company they use for their services. So with that, we're recommending to increase the base rate on those services by 3%, and then increase the fee for collection of those services out of the zone that we're servicing that day. We're also recommending to decrease the discounts we give them for having multiple-day or multiple-bin services. And then we're wanting to, we're recommending to convert our special pickup fee from a tiered structure to a flat structure. Essentially what that is, is if we service a customer and the bin is blocked for some reason or otherwise not serviceable, we have to have that situation remedied, and so we go on route, and then once the situation's remedied, we come back off our routing and service that, so we just want to charge a flat fee for that. We're also recommending to increase our compactor base rate, also to increase our excessive weight charge, and lastly, increase our cardboard bin charge by $5 per bin. By offering this program, it still allows our commercial customers an option to recycle, and that cost still keeps it under the cost of a second trash bin. So next, I'd also like to cover our other commercial program, which is our roll-off program. This is also the same as the front-load program, where it's open market, and so the customers and businesses can choose what waste company they use for this. We're recommending to increase our set fee on that program as well as our trash per ton and green per ton rate. So on the second chart there, I've just included, so you could see what that means to the average user, and so it's essentially $25 every time they utilize the service. And again, I've included a chart below for competitor comparison of a like-size roll-off, and you can see the City of Mesa is still below the competitors that are operating with in our city, so we're still offering an affordable option for the residents and businesses.
Before you leave that point, I think, I love the way you framed this, which is this part of our business is just market-driven, right? I mean, it's, if we, our charges are too high, then our commercial competitors will put us out of business, and if we're a good choice, then we'll have lots of work to do. But the difference, it seems like our, we're fairly, I mean, we're substantially less than our competitors. Is that where we want to be, or can we, is there some room for, for making that price gap up?
I think what we look at with our commercial program, and it's, it's a very good point, Mayor, that, you know, we're competing with the private sector. We try and provide the best service that we can at the lowest price that we can while still making sure that the city is making a profit off of that, so that we're not subsidizing a commercial business with, say, our residential program. So we're making sure that we're making money off of it, but we're also trying to keep our prices as low as possible, with the idea being that that also forces our competitors then to keep those prices low for businesses or residents at the City of Mesa. One of the things there, in the private sector, their fees and charges that they have are very flexible. In other words, they, they're not coming to council every year and asking for that approval for these, and they can change based off of demand. We are seeing such high demand right now for our roll-off program, I'm of the belief that, that the privates who are seeing that same demand are increasing their prices because they know that the demand is there and folks are going to pay that. So there's more, a lot more fluctuation in their pricing than what you will see with the city. And that is one of the reasons, too, with businesses, why they will choose the City of Mesa, is they know what their rate is going to be. We let them know ahead of time after we have these meetings and we get council approval, this is what your rate will go to, whereas if you're with the private sector, sometimes that will change. There'll be surcharges that get added on, there'll be other things that get added into your bill that the business wasn't expecting. So we do get that feedback even from our, our commercial customers, that they appreciate, that they know what their bill's going to be, that bill stays that amount for the year. And then, you know, based off of our conversations here, we let them know ahead of time any increases that we may have.
And, and I mean, I've run a business too. I'm not suggesting we gouge our commercial customers, but that, it's nice that we can be the low-cost provider, and that's where we should be. But I'm just wondering if, when, we're also, you know, we're tweaking the residential, we're saying, hey, sorry, we're going to charge you, you know, ten cents a month more for your green barrel and this and that. But we're a couple hundred dollars less, you know, on the, on the commercial side. I wonder if we can run a model where we say, okay, let's, let's bump up the commercial roll-off by fifty dollars. And what would that impact be? Would that cover some of the, the residential, you know, marginal increases that we're proposing?
We, we could definitely take a look. I think when we look at the total revenue that we get, roll-off program versus our side-load barrel programs, that the roll-off program is a lot less revenue, simply because the, you know, the bulk of our business does still come from.
I get it. Yeah, this is a fairly small part of our business, so increasing prices there is not going to have a dramatic impact.
But how much that would really mitigate against the residential will be, not dollar-for-dollar, it'll be, it'll be quite, it'll be much less.
I get it. We've got hundreds of thousands of customers on the residential.
Right.
And how many roll-off customers do we have?
Well, we currently run, we currently run five routes a day. I actually wrote that number down.
How many residential routes?
Vice Mayor, I think we have, we service around two thousand roll-off customers a year. And then our residential accounts are, you know, a hundred, depending on the month with our visitors, a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-three thousand.
I get it. I'm, I'm curious to see if it would have an impact if we shifted that a little bit. I know there's other questions. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I've, I've kind of, in our audit and finance, I kind of indicated that we should probably be charging a little bit more for this commercial roll-off. And in lieu of the competitor pricing, because one of the things I heard earlier is sometimes your compressed natural gas might cost us a little bit more to get that gas. And I hope you're figuring that into the cost analysis, which I'm sure you are. But regardless, I mean, containers are hard to get a hold of, drivers are hard to get a hold of to do the servicing, right? So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are kind of open-ended, and personally, I'm in favor with the mayor to increase that price just a little bit.
Let's take a look at it.
Even though it's not going to be a big, you know, we're not trying to make money, but we're trying to stay somewhat competitive with the market. And if we're below that, then.
Good news is when we raise revenues and if areas like this stays in the fund to help out.
Well, and that fund also generates to the general fund and also to our public safety fund. And so, I mean, it's going to a good end cause, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Let's look at it.
That's where I'm at.
Frankie.
I think my question was on demand. You're saying that there's an increase on demand on the commercial side. Is that increasing by, we had two thousand, you mentioned, as far as customers? Are we seeing increased demand as we move forward? And do we have the infrastructure? Because I imagine they, they, we use different trucks than the residential, so do we have the capacity to do more commercial if we want to?
Mayor, Council member, are, so right now, the largest demand that we're seeing is in our roll-off program. And our biggest deficit that we're seeing in being able to meet that demand is having enough operators to be in the truck and operate that, those pieces of equipment. We have, you know, had some difficulty. I have had positions open since January, and we're struggling to get good quality candidates that are filling those. We did do interviews yesterday, and we're hoping that we'll, we'll have more operators onboard. We've got more starting. But it has been a struggle with staffing is our biggest issue. We do have the trucks, we believe that we have the roll-off boxes, we have ordered more of them. And then even with the front-load program, we do have the, the trucks and the bins necessary to service our commercial customers. Our biggest struggle right now is staffing.
But do we have outsized increase on customers that are coming in that can help on manage some of these, these costs, or? Like, you mentioned there's a demand on, on commercial coming on to our, our service. What, what does that demand look like? Is that worthwhile to, you know, invest more or to get more customers, or?
I, yes, it is worth, and we have been. So just to let you know, we used to run typically six or seven roll-off routes a day, and we've been limiting that to five right now because we don't have the staff. And what, what happens, because we have, we have some operators with their equipment operator threes, that they can operate any of the pieces of equipment that we have. The problem is, is when I, when we run seven roll-off routes right now, I'm taking that away either from our front-load or from our ASL, so our side-load barrel program. And so what we've been trying to balance, because there is fluctuations within the roll-off program, and then a lot of the demand that we're seeing is temporary customers for roll-off, so it's a one-time project that they're doing.
Think of like a remodel, you know, if that surges, then you're going to have a lot of demand for that. So construction activity.
Not consistent.
Yeah, whereas his other accounts, where he's picking up at a commercial, that's different, right? Because they're going to sign up for months.
Right, and, and we've been focused on making sure that our, our full-time customers, our permanent customers are our number-one priority, because that's the base of what we do. And then it, it has been putting that, then we tell our, you know, if you call for a fourteen-day rental, you may be out a couple of weeks before we're able to service you. But we're really trying to focus our energy to make sure that our existing permanent customers that have been with us for years, or that the residents of City of Mesa that have their barrels, you know, here, that we're able to service them every single day.
Mr. Thompson.
Does Mesa have exclusivity on the commercial side for both front-load and roll-off?
Mayor, Council member, no. We operate in an open market. So if you are a business in the City of Mesa, you have your choice of who your waste provider would be. In the same, if you're a resident and you want to roll off for a remodel project, as Chris was describing, you have your choice of who you would like to provide that service.
Do we risk losing to the competition on the free market there if we increase our pricing too much?
There is always a balance associated with what our rates are to cover the costs that we have and make sure that we're able to provide that service. But I, I will say that we have, you know, it's not dramatic increase like we see on the residential side of number of customers, but over the last five years, we have seen, you know, year-over-year increases in the number of commercial customers that we have. It's a small rate of growth, one percent maybe, but we have been able to hold steady. And that's been through, you know, we had earlier where apartment complexes became eligible instead of them going into the open market, and we thought that we would lose a lot of our commercial customers with that. We were able to maintain a lot of our, our apartment complex customers and even have grown the business since that point. So we have been successful in balancing that, you know, rate that we charge versus the service that we provide.
So are we, are we still on the front-load recommend, front-load commercial? Are we still competitive or below the competition price?
We are competitive. I wouldn't say that we're below on the front-load. Again, there's fluctuations with the private sector and what they're able to charge, but we have consistently been able to compete with them on a regular basis. The number-one thing that we typically get from folks that if they've left and they come back to the City of Mesa is that the service we provide is worth maybe that little bit more that they're paying on a month-to-month basis. Because when they call here, they're talking to a City of Mesa employee that is here in Mesa, Arizona, the same as them, as opposed to calling, if you're dealing with one of the major waste companies, you're going to a call center. You could be, you, you really don't know who the person is that you're talking to. Whereas our, I, my office is right outside of our call center. A lot of our commercial customers, they know our customer service representatives by name. And so they're able to call them, talk to somebody that they know, get the service that they need, and to them, there's a value to that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about a few of our other programs.
That went well. So Flare to Fuel, so this is a couple of updates. This is separate from our rate discussion, but a couple of updates on projects that I've talked with you in the past, and figured the council would be interested in getting updates. So first is the Flare to Fuel project. We are currently at sixty percent design, but I had an email this morning that we should be at ninety percent design by mid-October. So there was a slight holdup on this project, that we needed to do some additional gas sampling at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant of the digesters to ensure that the treatment system we are putting in place will work for injecting that, that natural gas into our natural gas utility. We've completed that sampling, and now we are back on track and should have that ninety percent design by mid-October. And then we're hoping design will be complete by beginning, end of the year. So either the, the end of 2021, beginning of 2022, we'll be at a hundred percent design, and looking at coming onboard in 2023 with that project. Now, this is a great project when we talk about sustainability. If it's in with our Climate Action Plan, it will increase our renewable energy portfolio. But in addition to that, there's a financial savings that's associated with it. There are financial benefits when we show that use in our solid waste vehicles. We generate what are called renewable identification numbers, RINs, that have a monetary value to them, and that monetary value is going to help us to pay this project off. And we're anticipating it's about a seven to an eleven-year payback on this project, with the life cycle of the equipment being fifteen to twenty years.
And Scott, you've gotten a lot of interest in those RINs, right?
Yes, so it, the renewable natural gas market is really coming into, it's, it's an emerging market that there's now a lot of interest in. While we did have somebody, so when the sampling that we did, we brought in what is a mobile gas chromatograph. The, the consultant that we had doing that, he literally has been traveling the country for the last two years with his mobile GC unit, sampling at, at dairies, wastewater treatment plants in different places for these renewable natural gas projects that are coming online. While we had him here, we also had him do some sampling at the Greenfield Plant in anticipation that there may be a possibility of doing a project down there in the future. It's same type of digesters that we have there, larger project, but, you know, as we prove out this concept at the Northwest Plant, the idea was, if we already have somebody here, that we can do that.
Yes, I need to catch up just a little bit on this. Is this Flare to Fuel project, is this just the byproduct of water treatment, or does it also include the, the food waste, you know, pilot project that we've?
This is, we've been calling this the first phase of still food to energy. We're still working on being able to put a bio slurry into the digesters at some point, but this is taking advantage of the existing biogas that comes off of those digesters. So it's just the municipal sewage that is being treated at this point, and it's existing biogas. And the reason we call it Flare to Fuel, that currently is a, a gas that's flared, and so we're going to take that flare gas and turn it into a.
Instead of just burning it off?
Yeah.
Full curtain verdict.
So this is not the food-to-energy program, this is just the existing flare that's going off of wastewater treatment. But those digesters are the same ones we use for the food program.
Right, and this will allow us, in order to do the food-to-energy project, we would have to have this equipment in place in order to clean up the gas. What the food would do is then increase the amount of gas that is produced at the digesters. There are still some regulatory hurdles that we face with that. There's some operational hurdles that we're continuing to work through. And so, and again, we, we have a lot of interest. We've even been approached by private companies that produce this bio slurry now and are interested in finding cities that have excess capacity in their wastewater treatment plants. So this is, this is something that, there's a lot of folks, I think we were ahead of the game in, in Arizona at least. There was a lot of this happening in California, but there's a lot of private sector that is now getting involved in this area also.
That makes a lot of sense to me. I keep, I mean, the, rather than having, you know, interns, you know, shoving old food into blenders, you know, like we've seen.
Oh, yes.
Taking it to an industrial level.
We're going to scale it up just a little bit.
It makes sense, we might want to outsource that to somebody else, so, thank you. That's, that's a good update.
And the next one. So we've discussed before of the possibility of building a transfer station at the East Mesa Service Center. A transfer station would allow us some flexibility in where we are taking our materials and their final disposal location. So the City of Mesa Solid Waste currently doesn't own any post-collection facilities. So we pick up materials and we bring it to somebody else, and then we're dependent upon the private sector or the, the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community in order to take the material that we are collecting. So we are looking at, we are currently working with our engineering folks on the feasibility study. This feasibility study will really go in more in-depth, looking at what is the operational effects associated with having a transfer station, and really looking at the cost, both not just to build the facility, but then looking at any savings that are generated by reducing vehicle miles traveled. It's very expensive to drive the trucks that we drive. But in addition to that, whether or not there's some contractual savings that we can have by having other options available to us for the ultimate disposal and/or recycling of this material. So we'll be back in the first quarter of next year with an update on how this feasibility study is, is going, and some recommendations on what we would do going forward. In addition to that, as part of that same feasibility study, we're also looking at Pecos and Sausman, the possibility of building a materials recovery facility down there, with the same idea, this would be a regional approach. As we've looked at this, I think we would need some regional partners, but we're having those conversations, and now really looking again at what would a more detailed cost be with it, but then what is the savings that could be generated with us being able to kind of control our own destiny on the recycling side. So we'll be back, again, we'll be back the first quarter of next year with an update on the results of that analysis, and then get some more direction from the council.
Great, thank you. Council, any additional questions for these folks? Thank you.
Good morning. Frank McCray, Director of the Energy Resources Department. Joining me is Tony Kadoran, our Energy Resources Program Manager. That means he manages the planning and acquisition of electric and natural gas supplies for our department and our customers. And John Petroff is our Senior Fiscal Analyst. He manages our budgets and rates affairs. So we've got a hundred and thirty-one budgeted positions in the Energy Resources Department. We focus and prioritize providing safe, reliable, and efficient service to our approximately seventeen thousand electric customers in the downtown area and sixty-nine thousand gas customers. We have three large components of our cost. One is the debt service, and John and Tony will walk through these components, but debt service, that's the principal and interest on the bonds that are issued to fund our infrastructure and equipment replacements and new, new equipment and infrastructure to serve new customers or growing customers. And then we have our operational expenditures. Typically, largest component of that is our employment, our labor cost. And then we have those energy supply costs. Attachment two, to the council report, outlines those costly items and forecasts those out for the forecast period. The proposed electric rates are discussed on page six of the council report. One of the things that we do, if you can go to the next slide, so SRP, we, we've used a really good utility to benchmark, and so one of the things that we do is a part of our benchmarking and our performance measurement process is compare the bills of our customers with the bills if they had been served by Salt River Project. So this slide is based upon our average residential customer's monthly consumption in terms of kilowatt-hours. And so you can see we've compared very favorably for this ten-year period of time. At one point in time, our, our bills were as much as fifteen dollars and fifty cents less than SRP on a monthly basis for that average customer. So it, we've had this ten-year window where we had declining energy supply costs offsetting the increases in debt service, because we've spent a lot more money on capital, infrastructure, and equipment, and the cost of those pieces of equipment and infrastructure has increased, as well as some increases in operational costs. We're starting to be able to fill more vacant positions than we have historically. So those are significant upward pressures on those cost categories, the three primary cost categories. cost categories. It's been especially significant in the energy supply cost area. And so those upward pressures mean upward pressures on rates. So our ability to maintain that comparability or that advantage, if you will, in comparison with SRP is going to diminish over time in the near future. So we're working very hard. We're also seeing SRPs starting to raise some rates a little bit more than they have historically also during this 10-year period of time, but all the utility industry is facing these upward pressure on cost. So I'm going to turn it over to John and have him discuss where we're at with debt service and our operation expenditures and then Tony will discuss our energy supply costs and what we're doing with some funds there.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. So as Frank mentioned, some upward pressure. We'll start with debt service costs. So as you can see on this graph, you're seeing increases in our debt service costs. That's for completed projects and then future projects. Recently, we completed some substantial improvements at our Lewis and Ropes and substations and we anticipate future projects such as new services in the downtown area to meet the demand with new businesses and residential apartments and other housing downtown. Frank also mentioned increasing operating costs in the electric utility. You're seeing that on this graph. I just want to note, the 2021 actuals, you can see quite an increase to the projected 2122. We typically underspend in our operating costs, but we budget excess capacity in case these capital projects are delayed so we have the capacity to complete operation and maintenance projects if needed.
Mayor, Counsel. So what you're seeing here is our projection for the next six years, next six fiscal years of electric commodity costs. You can see the large spike in blue. That's our most likely projection for electric commodity costs for this fiscal year. In large part, that's driven by purchases for July, August and September that we had to make prior to this summer. Thankfully, with the wet and mild summer, we've actually come in under budget on those costs, so hopefully that 32 million is going to be significantly less by the end of the fiscal year, but we like to forecast very conservatively. Going forward, the orange line is the actual cost recovery that we will have to make from our customers after the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So that drops the cost that we have to recover from our customers from 32 million to just around $20 million and that ensures cost competitiveness with SRP.
So just Mayor, Counsel, recall, we presented the ARPA funding categories proposals. We suggested that we cover some of these big spikes in the electric utility to about a total of $20 million, which we spread over these years just because that huge spike and you know, a lot of the pricing coming out of California, I think is what was creating that, right? And so, and since many of our customers in that area also couldn't fit in that lower-income census tract area that was in eligible use. So again, this is just demonstrating the difference between, by using that $20 million, we're able to reduce that increase from the blue line down to the orange line.
We see additional relief coming. If we could go back just real quick. In the 2024 range, that's when we have scheduled to come online some significant utility-scale solar plus storage projects as well as some fast ramping natural gas resources, which we believe will increase reliability as well as stabilize costs and allow for more integration of renewable resources. So that's a step down you see from the 26 million to the 19.
Question.
So Chris, you mentioned as far as using the 20 million ARP funds, that is spread out through how many years?
Two, Chris.
Two years? And before the spike, what we've seen on commodity costs, it had been a lot lower, right? Or trending down, if I remember?
Yes, sir. If you go back to that prior slide where we did the bill comparison with SRP and if you looked at the three different cost components that I talked about, our energy supply costs were declining over time. Now, there was one year, I think it's, that was year 1516, where we had some advanced payments for the next fiscal year. We had some increases in costs that year, but then we had subsequent decreases. So our energy supply costs in that 10-year period of time were declining. They were also declining in a couple of years before that 10-year period, but through that 10-year period, those decreases in energy supply costs were offsetting the increases in debt service and so that's why we're able to maintain that competitive advantage with SRP.
So on the commodity cost pressures, do we expect that to fluctuate or, I know this more recently was, you know, hopefully an anomaly, but do these commodity cost pressures that we're seeing just an increase now that throughout the next five years as far as forecast, that is showing in this line to be higher than what we had before?
It is and our plan is, as Tony mentioned, we're going to be looking into long-term fixed-priced utility-scale solar contracts. We're bringing on natural gas-fired generation that can also use renewable gas from the FLIR to fuel type projects that Mr. Boucher talked about, as well as buying renewable natural gas out there on the market if we're using internally the renewable natural gas that the water treatment plants are providing. So we have a plan and we had an integrated resource plan several years ago that anticipated some kind of changes in the wholesale market. We didn't anticipate they would be this dramatic-
Sure.
-this soon.
And Frank, what's kind of driving that from your perspective that it's not just this one-time anomaly, but it looks like there's, you know, multiple years. What are you all seeing as far as the pricing that wasn't there in the prior decade?
The fundamentals are, that have changed the dynamics of the market are you've seen retirements of very large coal and natural gas plants and you can't replace a megawatt of coal or natural gas with a megawatt of solar. There's been a lot of solar added in California on rooftops and so they're very restricted on how much energy they can produce and they also diminish their production of energy when it becomes cloudy or when we've had smoke from fires inundate those areas where California's relying upon the solar rooftop energy supplies. The experience with Texas in the wintertime also scared the markets and created a lot of uncertainty and perceived risks, so that's made everybody want to avoid getting into long-term fixed, in this instance, long-term is two to three-year. They're wanting to avoid those longer-term fixed contracts. They want to be able to play the market where prices spike from $90 a megawatt hour to $9,000 a megawatt hour. So that's the market dynamics that we're trying to manage. That's why you see us, when we're going to be coming forward with some capital programs, we're going to be bringing in a microgrid with generation, generating units tied to it. We're also going to be bringing in a plant proposal for bringing in generation. So it's going to be very similar to what SRP is doing with bringing on some of their generation units to help support being able to rely upon solar and wind to keep that level of reliability up, but also manage the economics as well. So Tony, do you have anything else to add?
No, no, I think that captures it.
Can I just add to that? I think in your discussion too, these large utilities found that they need to overhaul their grids and all their infrastructure and it put a lot of pressure on them to upgrade and provide electricity and so consequently, all those infrastructure costs were passed on in the market.
Sure. And you can see on the debt service slide, we're going to be expending a significant amount of money to investing in the infrastructure to be able to serve the growth in downtown. Renaissance of downtown Mesa is going to exceed the capability of the infrastructure that was built 20 and 30 years ago to serve the customers that we had then. So as we see these mixed-use developments and the transient-oriented development, it's going to put pressures on our system to be able to reinforce them, upgrade them, and those are going to be costs that we're going to have to recover from the customers. Now, we try to get growth to pay for itself, if you will, but we're also reinforcing the system for existing customers when we upgrade the system to serve those new customers.
And particularly on the future projects, on the microgrid, that's, so all those future projects, the hope is to help contain those costs as far as the commodity costs that we have to endure this year, right? Hopefully in the future.
That's correct and it also allows us to maintain a level of reliability and to be able to absorb more renewables into our system as well because the renewables are what we call intermittent or unit contingent. These generating units will allow us to firm up those intermittent, non-firm type of resources. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Frank, are you able to, will you be able to recover your capital outlay on the commercial and residential customers on the electric grid?
I believe so. I believe so and I think we'll also be able to maintain that level of comparability with SRP in doing so.
Awesome, thank you. So now, speaking of SRP, here's a residential electric bill comparison for average monthly bills with SRP. As you can, in the green shaded area, so we talked about the ARPA funds. So the bill in green is what our proposed bill would be and the yellow is SRP and the green shaded area is if we did not use that ARPA money, what our projected bills would be without the assistance from that ARPA money. So we're maintaining comparability with SRP with the proposed rate increase.
But I think you mentioned a moment ago, right now, obviously, we're subsidizing this so that we are competitive, but after the ARPA money is gone, after the $20 million is spent, you think we will still be able to-
There may be that one year, there will be challenge, Mayor, but that's why we're trying to move quickly for these other alternative sources of energy so that we can maintain that competitiveness in the future. But right now, that cost that you're seeing in that fuzzy green color is the commodity cost is just passed on to the consumer, right? It's just the cost that we pay for that energy source. So it's not anything really we manage. What we're now deciding, Frank's coming up with plans, is let's find some resources that we can manage, especially as it relates through the natural gas source. And so we're working diligently to put some of those in place so that in the future, we can try to manage that or at least mitigate against these outside costs.
That strategy that we used for that 10-year period of time of rely upon almost entirely on the wholesale market isn't a good strategy anymore. We have to shift our strategy by bringing in these resources into our system. And one benefit of the microgrid, if you recall, last summer or the summer before last, we had a significant outage in the downtown area and it significantly impacted the public safety campus over at the PD headquarters. So the microgrid, the first one we're going to do is we're going to be at that public safety campus. So if we have that type of an event, in addition to being able to help us integrate renewables into our system, in addition to be able to offset some of these wholesale price spikes, it'll also help us isolate that part of our distribution system and maintain reliable service to the PD campus in that type of event. So we're going to use that as a template for other critical infrastructure around our system such as the Art Center where our district cooling system is at and Mesa City Plaza where Chris tells me it's a very essential, important building.
Only after PD and the Art Center, then?
I think part of the reason we struggle to be competitive on water is because we have an older system compared to newer communities and it seems like that's the same is true of our electric company is this, I mean, we celebrated our 100-year anniversary, right? A few years ago and so having an old electric infrastructure doesn't seem, I'm not, that's not the best place to be, right? So we're going to need to update, I mean, in order to accommodate the growth downtown, like we've said, we don't want to say no to people who want to do projects downtown because we can't supply the electric and I like what you've said about we need to get into the production business, otherwise we're going to just always be subject to the zigzag of prices, right? So to me, that's, what you're saying is we need some significant capital expenditures to increase our capacity. Is that, I haven't necessarily noticed that on any of these charts.
That's essentially the case. If you go back to the debt service, you will see that we've got new services down there for future projects. That is upgrading and expanding the infrastructure to serve new customers. Now, Tony's team also heads up our business development slash marketing group and his instructions from me are to not say no, that we're going to find a way to build the infrastructure. Now, there may be some sharing of cost with the developers that they're reluctant to come forward with, but that's the way most utilities fund their infrastructure, especially when it's a very risky enterprise on the part of the customer, is for the customer to come forward and help offset some of those initial costs. And then we'll have the issuance of the bonds to help spread those costs out over an extended period of time. But we're not saying no to any developer that I'm aware of. We may be asking them to hold off so that we can study our situation entirely between, say, First Street and First Avenue, between Centennial and Country Club, so that when they're starting to do transient-oriented development on Main Street, we're not looking at it on a piece-by-piece basis, but we're looking at it as a strategy for that rectangle and we're going to be able to minimize our costs, but also enhance our service to our customers, including the existing ones.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected. Here's the chart I was looking for that talks about the increased debt service for the future projects, so.
No, you're right, you're right, Mayor. I mean, that's where the pressure, that's a lot of that pressure is.
Does that, do we anticipate the growth, is there the formula of growth added to this as far as putting any down pressure to the costs of debt service?
I don't think we're going to see downward pressure on the cost of that service.
Is this going to cost a lot more to-
I think our, the cost of the principal interest, you know, per million dollars is going to be about the same whether we grow fast or slow. The demand for the issuance of the bonds is going to be increasing over time as we see these new customers come forward, unless they're willing to come forward and offset a lot of the infrastructure costs by making what's called a contribution in native construction.
But having more customers and using more of your, more customers will help us add more revenues, will help spread some of that cost. So certainly, if we can have customers, if we can densify the, you know, customers we have, have more density of using that same infrastructure that's in place, that certainly is helpful. And we've got some big projects that are still coming onboard that will be big customers. You know, ASU will be a big customer for us at some point. And when we develop Site 17, that will add more customers. Now, we'll have to extend some infrastructure. At the end of the day, we want that to, you know, it'll pay for itself. As Frank says, it's both on the electric and gas side. He's always having to have very smart conversations with developers about how much they're going to share in extending, whether it's electric or gas lines, to provide service to their development.
Just want to emphasize, certainly filling a vacant office or structure with an energy-consuming, bill-paying customer is going to help us. And there's a lot of instances where the incremental cost of converting from a vacant building to a new customer is minimal and we certainly work with the customers to minimize that impact and to get them onboard and get them to being a viable commercial entity.
Vice Mayor.
I have a few questions in regards to solar and its impact. I know we have an incentive program now residentially for our customers to implement solar to the grid and commercially, I don't know if we have any incentives and what are we doing, especially on our buildings? If you can refresh my memory, like the ASU building will be doing the post and some of these others of making sure that we do solar and I know there's some solar projects as far as in parking areas and how much that will impact or does that help the reliability and softening the costs on the market?
I'll let Tony get into some details on specific projects, but we just reached one megawatt of residential and commercial solar, so that incentive program for residential also applies to commercials. We do have some caps on how big of a system we can look at for each individual customer. I don't know that there's been any instances on the commercial side where that cap caused a problem with the commercial customer going forward with solar. We've got, you know, our long-term contracts that we're negotiating. We also have solar on the top of the ASU building. We've also got some parking areas where we're looking at putting in solar. I still have a desire to see something happen over at the Mesa Art Center. I still have a desire to see something happen over at the Mesa Art Center by creating an event space there. So once we get through the ASU project, we'll turn to that one. I think relying upon that solar is a great idea, but we do need to back up and we do need to firm up that solar and those renewable resources with some type of generation equipment so that when the solar's producing at noon at its peak, but it's starting to diminish when air conditioners are turning on between four and six and seven, we need to be able to offset the loss of that solar with some other type of firm resource. And that's where these generating units and the microgrid generators come in to play. So Tony, anything to add?
Yeah, yeah. Vice Mayor, Mayor Counsel. So we kind of have three buckets of solar. The first is our customer program, like you mentioned. We don't currently have an incentive for those customers to add solar, but they are receiving full net metering, which a lot of utilities aren't offering right now. And we're not charging them a special rate, so they're just receiving the rate that everybody else is receiving, whereas if you're on SRP APS, you're going to be charged a special solar rate where they'll increase your fixed charge to try and make that money up. We keep it in check by just limiting the size of the solar. And the lack of incentives, we think, hasn't stopped the growth at all. We have, I think we have about 40 customers in some stage of the solar process right now. I mean, it's amazing how much volume we have to handle with this program. And that's not only getting them interconnected, but also trying to make sure that they're being told how our program works accurately versus what they're being promised. So, you know, I get YouTube ads saying, do you have this meter on your house? If so, you'll never pay an electric bill again. And we have to kind of, with every installation, we have to walk that back and make sure, no, we're going to help you put solar, but that's just not what's going to happen. So that's the first bucket, and Frank mentioned that's at one megawatt. The second is utility-side projects like ASU and like the downtown ice rink building. And we're also putting together solar north of Mesa City Plaza and at the 55 North Building. Those were included in one RFP package. That's right around 850 KW of solar. So if we looked at our megawatt of customer-owned solar and that 850-ish KW of utility solar, that's right around 1% to 1.5% of our energy supply portfolio. So it's helpful in managing our costs because they're kind of fixed costs. We know what they're going to be for a long time. But it's not a substantial portion of our portfolio. We are looking to do other sites, as Frank mentioned, and my personal opinion, I think some of the parking lots are going to be very easy to do. Some are going to be a little more challenging, but some of them offer benefits, like Frank mentioned, like the Art Center, where not only do we provide power to our utility, but we also create a space for the community to use, for the Art Center to generate revenue, things like that. So that's kind of what we're looking for, is projects that will not only create energy for our utility but leverage community benefits as well.
Could I just add what we're doing on the third bucket, too?
On the utility side, yeah.
The utility scale.
Sure. And then, and on the utility scale side, we're engaging, I think, three or four parties right now. These projects don't, they're very large projects, middle-of-the-desert-type project that puts megawatts and megawatts of solar somewhere where there's nothing right now. And because Mesa's a smaller utility, it's hard for us to find those opportunities sometimes, so we try and say, hey, bigger utility, if you're putting in 100 megawatts, can we be 10 on top of that? So we're working with the larger utilities to try and find those opportunities. But we're also looking at slightly smaller projects that we can partner with similar utilities, like the electrical districts, other municipal utilities throughout the state, to see if we can work together to build a larger project to capture economies of scale. And those projects are going to be very inexpensive and price stability compared to the other solar, but they're also a couple of years off. They just take a while to build and negotiate, so.
I just wanted to throw in battery storage containers, too. Look at that, please, because the implementation of those, even, you know, are going to steel storage container, they're coming more popular. I mean, SRP's doing one at 200 or 300 megawatt Tesla batteries, as you know. I sent Frank all the press releases, so he gets it.
Thanks.
Yeah, we, with those utility-scale projects, it's very hard for us to make them work without storage. So the storage is very useful for us, so we're trying to include that in any deal we're looking at.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Continuing on, so here's our proposed residential electric rate recommendation increases. So the effective increase on an average customer with these increases would be 2.2% or $2.39 a month. And the Tier 2 adjustment in winter, that will only affect large-use customers. Moving on to commercial electric bill comparisons, so this is the average monthly bill for our commercial customers, for small, average, and large-use customers. And again, you can see what the Mesa bills would be if we did not get that ARPA funding compared to SRP and the current Mesa bills. And then our proposed commercial electric rates, we're seeing the effective rate on an average customer increase would be 0.6% or $2.50 a month. The Tier 2 adjustments in blue, those only affect large-use customers over 15,000 kilowatt-hours a month.
Gas?
So moving on to gas, like electric, we have cost pressures on the debt service side for our gas utility. Some of those projects are mainly driven to meet demand with the continued growth in our Magma service area. And then also, we have a lot of aging infrastructure projects that we coordinate with other city And the operating cost increases, again, like electric, most of those are related to payroll and benefit increases. Like, sorry, electric, sorry. We compare our residential bills to Southwest Gas, and this is the comparison for small, average, and large customers, and we maintain comparability with Southwest Gas, and we expect that with our proposed rate increases.
What would be the difference between a large and a small residential customer? I mean, is that the difference between having, I mean, just the square footage of the house or?
It'll be the square footage of the house and the number of appliances that they have. Typically, our small customer is someone who's in a, referred to as a starter home, 1,200 to maybe 1,400 square feet, three-bedroom, doesn't have an outdoor barbecue, typically has a water heater and a space heater. That's about the only end-use they have. When you get to a larger customer on the residential side, it's probably a much larger house, probably in the 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, has a stove, has a gas dryer, has some kind of a outdoor use, such as a pool heater or spa heater, some other type of aesthetic use. Do you have the monthly consumption numbers handy?
That's okay. I get it. I was just trying to figure out, I mean, I know where I fall on that, unfortunately. Yeah. Thank you.
Question on the growth. What's the, what's the growth that is still yet to come, especially in the Magma area, right? Because I think that's predominantly the growth that we're seeing, right, on gas.
Yeah, we are seeing some infill development in and around the city of Mesa proper, but I'm going to let Tony talk about the growth in Magma and especially some large industrial-type potential development down there that we're working with through the state and the town of Queen Creek's Economic Development Office, as well as the residential developments. We're still seeing some very vibrant residential development activity there.
Yeah, Mayor Counsel, Councilmember Luna, or Councilwoman, ready, I'm sorry. So we are seeing continued growth in Magma. Throughout the past two decades, we topped out right around 3,000 new customers a year in the early 2000s in Magma. And in the recession that dipped down to about 500 customers, 600 customers a year, we're back up around 2,000, though. So we're adding right around 2,000 customers in Magma right now per year. And then in East Mesa, we also saw some substantial growth in, over the past two decades of maybe 200 to 300 per year. That since tailed off with the buildup of Mountain Bridge, Los Sendas, and Red Mountain Ranch. So really, our growth is focused in Magma right now, and we thought things would level out or slow down with COVID, but the developers kept us going, they kept us busy. So we have executed contracts with new subdivisions down there, probably on the order of 4,000 or 5,000 homes under contract still yet to receive a service line, if we added everything up that we have outstanding in terms of contracts. So, yeah, we look at kind of the delta between the number of meters we have installed and the number of homes we have on contract in Magma, and it hasn't changed. It's still going strong, so we have that leading indicator that growth is still going very strong down there. And then on the commercial and industrial side, we are working with the Arizona Commerce Department.
Department of Commerce.
Department of Commerce. They're sending us a lot of very large natural gas-using projects in Magma, and so we're having to respond to maybe two or three a month, very large users, similar to CMC Steel, and working with those developments to make it work so, like Frank mentioned, the growth pays for itself, so we're not seeing other customers subsidize these very large users while still being competitive with Southwest Gas and surrounding utilities in every state, because, to be honest, these customers are looking in other states as well. And so we are able to retain cost competitiveness there and work with these companies, but we haven't quite landed one yet, and we're not sure if that's what the reason is there, but growth is going very strong still, I guess, just to summarize things.
And one of the things that's happening down in Magma, and it's kind of a natural development, is you get the residential development down there, you start getting a saturation level where now you're starting to get the commercial, the restaurants, the gas stations, the shopping centers. So you're starting to see that type of commercial development down there now.
Mayor, maybe next time, just put a map on where Magma and our gas area. We have a new council member that, you know, where's Magma?
Well, it's close to Florida.
Or west, west New Mexico, somewhere like that.
This is why we're happy for the growth in Queen Creek, is because we're cha-ching, right, for as far as Mesa utility goes.
Yeah, and it's, and a lot of this is not even in Queen Creek, it's.
Yeah, it's outside of it.
Outside of it, so.
It's Pinal County, but it's not within the corporate limits.
What wants to be someday, Santan Valley.
Right.
Okay, so to wrap up.
Mr. Thompson, I think, has a question.
Yeah, for, going back to your debt service costs, big issue right now on the, in the news, M8000? Do we have much M8000 in our system at all?
We don't, but I'll let Tony go into the details of what we've done to investigate that and make sure that we're not at risk there.
Yeah, so the 8,000 Driscoll Plex is a high-density polyethylene blend of pipe, and past regimes have been adamant that Mesa will always and forever only use medium-density pipes. So we're very confident that we don't have any of that pipe in our system, and we're, you know, putting our crews on notice. If you see any high-density, let us know. But really, the only high-density pipe or fittings that we use have been what they call modern PE 100 blends. So, yeah, we're confident we don't have any of that.
So we primarily use M80100 then?
I'm sorry.
M80100 is usually what we use?
I'd have to get it for you.
Don't worry about it.
For the rest of the council's information, it's a pipe that was put in back in the '70s and '80s, and it deteriorates quickly in high-temperature applications. And so there's been some significant failures and accidents as a result of it. So that's why it's become a very critical issue for us to make sure that we know what is or isn't in our system and how we're going to manage that if we have any type of material like that in our systems. Thank you, Kevin.
And my second question is with, it seems like in Texas, about every 10 years, they have a severe winter that wellheads freeze up and natural gas supply is cut coming in from the south. Are we doing anything to hedge our bets against that for another 10 years so that we don't go into crunch mode where we have to start trying to curtail customers? So, you know, are we taking, do we have an opportunity or is there an opportunity to come off the line from the north from the Panhandle versus coming off of the Permian Basin?
I'll let Tony dig into the details, but we do have access to the Four Corners Basin, but they are also at some times prone to freezes. So we try to diversify and make sure that we capitalize on both. We did not have to curtail customers this year. We did ask them to be mindful of their usage, but we didn't go through any type of a curtailment process.
I know we were sitting on the edge of our seat watching that, so.
Yeah, we were, we were a little anxious for a couple of days there, but I'll let Tony dive into more details on what we're doing contractually.
Yeah, I just echo that. We do have transportation across the north main line right now, and our scheduling agent, Shell, has been great at, if there's no reasonable capacity across the south main line, they'll either buy or use their own transportation to get us gas across the north main line. So we do have kind of an even split of transportation between the San Juan Basin, which is the supply area near Farmington, New Mexico, and the Permian Basin, which is west Texas near El Paso. We used to get almost all of our gas from San Juan, then with the advent of horizontal-directional drilling and hydraulic fracturing, all that gas started coming out of the Permian, so we've been heavily on the Permian recently. We are looking at additional transportation. Our system has grown. The last time we upped our transportation contracts was in the '90s, and that was as a result of a settlement with El Paso Natural Gas. So now there's another pipeline in the area, Transwestern, so we're talking to them, talking to El Paso, to see if more transportation would be good. But, yeah, with regards to Texas, it was really strange, because over the past 10 years, we've had freeze-off events in 2011, 2007, 2015, I think. We've had a multitude of them, and every time, we've never had penalties greater than $50,000 in any given month against a natural gas budget in the tens of millions of dollars. So it's never been something that we've had to worry about like it was in February. It really was a truly unprecedented event. So I'm on the chair of the Natural Gas Supply Committee for the APGA, and everybody that we talk to is figuring out, how do we avoid this happening again? There's no good answers right now, but we're, we are putting out an RFP for more gas supplies that'll hit the market soon, that we're talking to these suppliers to make them demonstrate, you know, what, how much supply did you lose this February? What have you done since? How much of your gas supplies are weatherized? How much of the compressor stations are weatherized, et cetera? So we're trying to do more due diligence as a first step, but the industry as a whole is really struggling as to how to prevent this happening again, and I know Texas is taking a lot of action with it, but, yeah, we're, it's in the back of our minds for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Our best solution is to diversify our supply as much as possible, but to diversify supply, we have to get additional transportation. So those are the big steps that we're taking. That and being prepared to ask our customers to conserve if it gets precarious.
So to wrap up, our proposed residential gas rate increases, we're proposing a 50-cent increase on the service charge and some Tier 2 usage adjustments. For an average customer, that would be an effective increase of 1.8% or 72 cents a month. And the Tier 2 adjustments, those only affect large-use customers.
All right. Great, thank you.
Yeah, so we're, thanks for all our departments. I think Brian's going to go through the forecast. One thing I want to share with the council is during this past year, year and a half, I think it's easy for us to say that our utilities have been more affordable than they ever have, and I say that because we have contributed almost $6 million in helping to pay utility costs for our low-income residents. And we've, because of that, obviously, we've kept so many of them from ever having to be disconnected. We're certainly seeing an improvement in there, that area that the demand isn't what it has been in the past, but we'll.
has been in the past, but we'll keep monitoring that as we go forward. We've allocated and still have a little bit of dollars in the ARPA, just, we kind of set aside a little bit just to, just in case. But the good news is, right now, you know, we still have some, I'm saying we don't have disconnects, but a lot of times that's, we find out people have moved or for a variety of other reasons. But our ability to assist our customers, our utility customers, has never been better, obviously, and as a result, we've been able to keep individuals being able to pay their utility bills over the last year and a half in a very robust way, so.
So Mayor, Council, taking all of that, working with the departments and forecasting their operating expenses, and also the, the debt service coming on, and also with the, the projects that have been mentioned throughout the, the presentations. We bring, we brought that all together and come up with the, the five-year forecast, and this does include the recommended rates from the, the individual departments. And so I, with that, the previous, with our five principles, we're still looking to do a smoothing throughout. So the column of fiscal year '21, '22, the highlighted green and the tan, that is the column that are the recommended rates for this coming up, for this coming up year. So this is where council would be taking action on. Previously, as the forecast, what we gray out is for planning purposes, and what, as I mentioned before, is one of the principles, is smoothing the rate adjustments out. So if you notice that we'll have the, we have the recommended rates in green, however, we're in the, in the gray, we're smoothing those rates out also, and also looking to decrease the percentages on, on some of them to about CPI. So right now, currently, CPI is just over 4% for the cost, the Consumer Price Index. And with that, some of the, the averages that you've, that were presented by the, the departments are below that. So with this, bringing it all together, that, what the line we like to take a look at and concentrate on too, is the total net sources and uses, that top line. And as mentioned, we do use that reserve balance as to smooth out the rates, so you'll see a, a drawdown in that fund balance. However, in the outer years, it does decrease from the 11 million down to eight, down to seven. And so we are using that, but with the rate adjustments that are, that are planned and that are recommended, we're looking to decrease that. And then also, still trying to maintain affordability in our, in our utility system. So these are the recommended rates, rate adjustments that staff is proposing to council. And just to, to give you a, a little, previously, like I believe last year, we came to council and just to see, just for planning purposes, we go through a bunch of different scenarios. If we were able to, or if it was recommended to do a 0% rate adjust, rate adjustment for residential and see how long that would go, we would be able to do it for two years. However, as you know, we like to try to smooth out, we would have a, a rate increase of 7% for two years before we can go down to about a 2%. And what I'm looking at also is in fiscal year 16, or '26, '27, that 15.8, that's what we're trying to gauge at, is the recommended rates on the previous slide, that ending balance is 15.8. So if we were to do 0% and still try to maintain that percentage reserve balance, this would be the recommend, this would be the, how the forecast would look. So just to give you kind of a, a, a look at kind of the scenarios that we take a look at.
Thank you. Mr. Haredia.
Question on the ending reserve balance percent. What, what's been the average ending reserve balance percent for the last five years? Do you have that?
So the average has been in the high 20s, low 30s. What has helped that is, a lot of it has been the, the refunding of debt. So we've been able to refund that debt, and with that refunding, we get a, we get a saving, so that gives us a, a positive net sources and uses. So a lot of that is, is what helps that. We don't forecast future refundings because we don't know what the market's going to be like. So if the CFO and the city decides, hey, you know what, we want to refund this coming up spring, we'll wait until we get some estimates in the springtime when we come back to budget, and then we would start putting that in there, but we don't like to forecast out. So with that, so it's usually been in the high 20s of the average.
Just my question is that, since I've been on council, I think we've had these ending reserve percent balance that we forecast, and usually, you know, when I first was on, probably the '21, '22 was a lot less, right, that we were forecasting, but we implemented those strategies as far as cost. So taking it year by year, I think we will see those changes for next year, right, as far as the percentage might be higher or lower based on what we bring in or what we pay down or.
Sure. And Mayor, Council, Haredia.
A great point. I mean, obviously, we try to be very conservative. I think what we have to be careful at, we don't necessarily, when we look at this, we don't look at what's happening next year, we try to figure out where it's going to be for the next four or five years, because that's how even our rating agencies, and that's how we just want to make sure there's trends that we can manage. So certainly, there's some, there's some flexibility in here, how fast we're drawing down the fund balance, but you know, what makes us a little nervous is that in this next year, we're projecting a net, you know, $22 million of spending more than we're bringing in. And so those kinds of numbers kind of makes, you know, we're drawing down the fund balance, which we have, so we're purposely drawing down that $146 million that we ended up with last year. So absorbing that 22 million, which is a result of some, I think, some solid waste vehicles and things like that, but we just, we're very conservative, so certainly, there's some flexibility in here. I think the good news for us is that way we are looking at it is, while this is 3% this year, going out into the future, it's probably going to be 2, 2 and 1/2% at the most, at least based on the current, and I think that's a pretty reasonable number considering inflation and cost of, you know, things going up. So we think that keeps us in a very competitive rate scenario going out into the future.
Yeah, no, I think it's just looking at, at least, you know, on the residential pressures as far as adding more costs and seeing how we can, are we paying, are, are we using the balance on the reserve enough to help with those pressures? So always having those conversations is important.
And I would say there's, if, you know, at some point in this process, there's probably a little flexibility in that rate if we need to adjust it down a little bit, we probably could.
Mr. Thompson.
Well, that was going to be my question, Chris, is with, with business and residents trying to come out of the pandemic, would we, as a city, be better served if we were to reduce those numbers by maybe a quarter percent or a half percent? What would that look like smoothing that curve out into the future? That way, people can, you know, put a little extra money back into their pocket and.
Well, reducing the future cost is really what we're doing, yeah. No, we could, we could come back, we've given you a conservative amount. Certainly, we could look at the water, residential and wastewater residential and see what, mostly water, I think that's the biggest component of that, and we could look and see what, bringing that down a quarter percent or half percent, what that would look like. It, it would mean that most likely somewhere out into the future, that 2%, maybe 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2, or something like that, but certainly, we could take a look at that and for the future. So I think what we'd like to do is just, we're going to recommend, I think you see that final slide, where we're going to have the council give notice of intent to raise the rates, and then, and then I think we raise the, we actually do the introduction of the rates in November. So what we would suggest is let's go forward with a notice of intent to raise the rates, and then before the 15th, well, before the 15th, probably the end of October, 1st of November, we come back and, and present to you an option maybe to look at a little tweaking down of that residential water rate, if that's what you'd like us to do, and then just showing what the impact would be in those outer years, which I don't think will be significant.
And I think not only the residential, but on the commercial side too, on the small, especially the small commercial, right? The mom and pop, the entrepreneurs, they're trying to get their businesses back up and running. I mean, we helped offset a lot of their costs with the CARESAC dollars. Now we're hitting them in their pocketbook when they're finally getting stable. And so, you know, I know we've got a lot of capital investment that we've done over the few, last few years, that, you know, keeping our, our power grid and our gra, our gas grid and everything reliable and sustainable, and I know we have to invest in that to keep it reliable, but can we give the, give the ratepayers a?
Well, we've looked, so you're saying inside that water non-residential, specific look at the small business rate of maybe not, not all the different tiers of, of non-residential, but specifically the lowest one?
Okay.
I would, I would support that.
Okay. Well, let me ask a question about that, because I think one, one of our, our goals is to balance residential and commercial, and in the past, we felt like maybe the balance wasn't what we wanted it to be, and that, that we were, you know, weighted more heavily on residential than, and, and so I, I think we need to continue that direction. And, and like I said, I, I'm, I'm a small business owner, I'm, I'm sympathetic to small business owners, but there's a difference between post, I mean, taxable income, when I, my utility bill reduces my taxes and my over, and, and my taxable income. When I'm paying my residential bill, that's with after-tax dollars, I mean, that's coming right off of my, you know, putting, keeping milk in the refrigerator budget, right? So I'm, I'm probably less concerned. I, I like the idea of continuing our shift towards an emphasis on protecting the residential ratepayers. So I, I appreciate, this is a great production, presentation, and I appreciate that staff has been sensitive in the recommendations that's made. I mean, you are proposing reducing revenues less than expected expenses, so we are on this continuing mission to lower our fund balances. And I, I totally get that we, we, we don't want to go below that 20% because we're on the cusp of some major capital expenses, and we're going to need to issue debt, and so we need to have a good, a good balance sheet so we have, you know, a good bond rates when we do that. So I guess I'm, I'm stating the obvious, but.
So Mayor, we can just give, if you'll give us, I think if we can approve the notice intent for rates in October, before we, the introduction, we'll bring to you the scenario of maybe tweaking down the residential water rate, and we'll just look at, Mayor, you brought up a very good point, because we have been trying to make sure, whether you're a small business, a medium, or large, that you're paying similar equivalency as far as contributions to the rates like a residence. So maybe we should, we'll have that, just show, demonstrate that and show what the difference is in that, in that impact would be. So we can have those discussions.
Great, and I, specifically, I would ask you to maybe look at coming down a half percent on the residential water, a half percent on the residential wastewater, and then, like we talked about earlier, let's look at the, what our prices ought to be for the commercial roll-off. I, I get that that might not have a serious impact, but it still seems like there's some, a cushion there.
Sure. Mayor, let me just mention though, on water residential, we've been way behind on that. If we come down a half percent, which we could, what I'm concerned about is see those future years, the projections out, it's going to be closer, it's going to be, we're going to be pushing 5% in the future on wastewater residential.
I, I get it, and, and to the extent I'm weighing in on that, you know, over the next three years, what I'm going to look at is the fund balance. When, when we're still in the high 20s, I'm going to say, let's err on the side of being a little more generous to the residential ratepayers. Mayor? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman, I know you've, you've got.
No, you're fine. I, I like this discussion. So the ARPA money that we're getting to offset some of this, can we use ARPA money for some of this utility discussion that we're having to keep residential rates lower? I know you're using 20 mil for.
Yeah, but that specifically.
Here comes our CFO.
Falls into a category, you can come up, it falls into a category that speaks specifically to impacts related to natural disasters, impacts that have impacted the energy, and what benefits us is the electric utility, which is the only part of the utility we're talking about using it 20 million for, is those customers are almost to 98% are in the qualified census tract, which allows us that flexibility.
Well, I'm trying to. Mike, you didn't want to say anything?
He was trying to make sure. All right. Okay, so we'll bring those back at the end of October, those scenarios and what those would look like.
So we will then see on a formal council agenda, the legal notice of intent to adjust rates, and when will that happen?
So yes, Mayor, Council.
There it is, right in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, no, no worries. October 4th is when it'll be on the agenda for city council to take action on the notice of intent. And just as the city manager indicated, even, we can bring this forward, and this really just sets the maximum amount of adjustment. We can always lower it, like you've suggested on some different scenarios, this just sets the maximum amount. So we will bring that on October 4th, and then after that, we'll come back in October, November timeframe with some scenarios, and then the introduction, we would still plan on November 15th of the introduction of the rate ordinances, and then on December 8th, the city council would take action on the utility rates, and then the effective date would be February 1st.
Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Would it be possible, now I'm just throwing this out here on the table with my colleagues, is raising the non-residential up maybe a quarter percent?
Which non-residential or?
Well, I mean, we have, we've set the maximum amounts at 5% for non-residential.
For water?
Well, water, solid waste, and if they were, maybe if you want to reduce it down on the residential side, maybe raise it up on the commercial side, non-residential a quarter percent as a maximum, then we can go from there from the different scenarios.
Oh, so when we do our notice.
Notice of intent.
And then we can have the discussion later.
Then we can have the discussion.
Because we can't go up, is what he's saying.
Correct, but I'd have to talk to the city attorney to see if it's per utility or if it's overall. So if we did the five, if we did the notice of intent of non-residential water at 5%, I believe we'd have to stay at 5%, we'd, or go lower, we wouldn't be able to go 5 and 1/4.
That's why he's saying, put the notice of intent to include 5 and 1/4.
You want to raise it.
Right?
That's all I'm asking.
That gives us more wiggle room as we.
And then if we want to come back to the 5%, we can, but we can't go back. Well, we could go back up, but we'd have to re-notice it again.
The same with the roll-offs, too. We could notice a higher.
We'll notice a higher rate on the roll-offs, too.
Yeah, I, I think the point is you're going to come back with new models, some tweaked models, and then we can see where the sweet spot is.
Just on the notice, we, it's better to be higher and then.
But those models have got to be within the parameters that we put in our initial notice, yeah.
Yes, 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 yes.
I, I support that.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. I know a lot of work went into that, so. Oh, I, thank you very much. Mr. Luna. Okay, well.
Stream shot.
Mr. Luna.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. No, I too support the 5% as staff recommended, and, and we'll look at tweaking it down. I, I think giving our residential users a slight discount would certainly be beneficial for our community, so I'm there with you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Oh, and also, I just want to, real quick, I'm very much a supporter of the smart meter, and Mr. Brady knows that really well, so I'm excited to get that rolled out in the coming years. So I know it's going to be a little longer for District 5, but I am excited for our residents in that area to get those smart meters in.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have something? Okay. Thank you, then. That, that completes this agenda item. Next item is item two, current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, I know you've all been very busy, anything you'd like to share with us?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, Luna.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to note that for Hispanic Heritage Month, we have been producing a series of videos, so we have, on Channel 11, we are going to be running the video that we initially produced, and that's with a former, my former assistant, Isaías García Romero, a former veteran who's becoming one of Mesa's finest, and we're excited about that. So that'll be running on Channel 11. But today, we're going to continue with this series with a story of the Dawson High School principal, Gabby Buckley. It'll air on Channel 11 as well, and also will be posted on my social media platforms. I hope you can catch the stories about some of Mesa's awesome Latinos, and we're excited about that. Also, we are going to have a, a meeting called Taking Care of Your Neighborhood. Mesa Community Services hosting a community meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM to help residents learn more about the city resources and, and the Mesa Now app. Space is limited, but there are spaces available. And if you would like to register, go to mesa.ac.gov. Registration information is also on my Facebook page. That's it, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have a, a few things. Yesterday was a quite a busy day. My fiancee, Yvonne Martinez, and I read a book at the library for the children's hour in English and Spanish in, in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, that's lots of fun. I attended a couple of business celebration events, Tan Hua, I guess, well, Councilmember Haredia, that's in your district, you might want to say more about that. I was on the late end, just saw you as I was coming in. as I was coming in. And I was with Councilmember Spilsberry in the afternoon with Lou Malnottis, Lou Malnottis Pizzeria. We had that pizza at the Alice Cooper Solid Octane Center opening is very good. It's Chicago style in the Dana Park shopping area. And what else? Last night, thank you to everybody who came out to Eagles Community Center for the Parks and Recreation and Climate Action Plan Community Input Session. We had a good turnout and thank you, everybody, for that. And I look forward to working going forward. And this weekend, I love Mesa, and there's a full day of celebration in downtown and two free concerts in the evening. You have to, I don't know, we might be sold out now. It's a free concert, but you still had to register for tickets to control the crowd.
I think we've sold out.
So but if you come to downtown, maybe you can hear on the purfery.
Sit on the lawn.
Yeah, Michael Franti at four thirty and Young the Giant at eight thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Saturday is going to be a busy day in downtown Mesa for sure. Anyone else want to weigh in? Yes, Mr. Reddian.
Like the Vice Mayor mentioned, Tan Hua is a small business in Macon Center, celebrated five-year anniversary there. A lot of guests were there yesterday. Also, tonight at Dobson Ranch Library, there's Parks and Rec is having their their Master Plan and Climate Action Plan meeting from six to eight P. M. So any of the the West Side folks that have missed the the other meetings can stop by the the library community room. And then also, three set of games at Sloan Park for the Mexican Baseball League, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They still have plenty of tickets left. So a lot of activities, again, happening this weekend.
Great, thank you. It seemed like the last few days, I've every day been on either a local or national webinar, talking about homelessness and Mesa College Promise. So that's I just want to know where are Mesa's getting a lot of attention for the the attention that we're paying to those two issues? So I think you'll see some of those in the media here over the next few days, if you haven't already. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Yes, Mayor, we'll see you next Thursday, seven thirty. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And Ms. Duff, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Luna.